I'd like to call this Sterling Heights City Council meeting to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Here.
Here.
President.
President.
Here.
Present.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Riska. Council, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
But moved in support. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Radke is absent tonight. He's away on a work conference and sends his regrets. And before we move into the report from Mr. Vanderpoel, I do want to take a brief moment to pass along some tragic and sad news. Just this weekend, the Sterling Heights Fire Department was deeply saddened to report the tragic loss of Lieutenant Lauren Farrell. Lauren was in Florida with his family in the afternoon of Sunday, March 1st, when he collapsed while playing pickleball with his two adult children. Extensive efforts from bystanders and first responders to revive him were not successful. Lauren was an exceptional firefighter who could always be counted on in times of need, not just for the public. He served with extreme dedication, but to his fellow firefighters whom he was very close. Lauren began his career in the city of Sterling Heights as a firefighter/paramedic on January 21st, 2003. Lauren had two children, a daughter who's 22 and a son who's 20, who were with him in his last moments, as was his mother. Lauren resided in Chesterfield Township and enjoyed the outdoors in his off time. He was an avid hunter, loved fishing, and enjoyed snowmobiling with friends. Anytime he could spend with his children was at the top of his list of things to do. On behalf of the entire community, I extend the city's deepest condolences to Lauren's family and friends as they mourn this tragic loss. So at this time, I would like to request a moment of silence in honor of Lauren Farrell, who will be deeply missed by all who had the privilege of knowing him. Thank you. With that, move on to the report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I want to remind everyone that the ever-popular cultural exchange program will take place this Friday, March 6th, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at our new community center just across the street. So this will be the first time that we've had the event there. We're really looking forward to it. As those of you who have attended the event in the past know, that it had definitely grown out of the senior center. It had become so popular and was really shoehorned in there, and it'll have so much more space now. So I look forward to the same entertainment, the same great ethnic music and dance and cuisine from city restaurateurs, cultural displays from Sterling Heights diverse population, and many other festivities. There will also be a free shuttle again, so if you aren't able to get there quite on time, certainly the community center parking lot will fill up, but we have plenty of parking on the city hall lot and the court lot, and the free shuttle will get you over to the new community center. You must check it out. It's absolutely fabulous. We look forward to seeing you there. Again, that's this upcoming Friday, March 6th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. And also, I wanted to remind everyone now that the holidays are over. Per city code, holiday decorative lights are supposed to be removed no more than 60 days after the holiday for which they are displayed. So our code enforcement personnel are coming across lights and displays that are still up, and please be reminded you have to get those down promptly or you face a citation. So just a reminder. And also, there's a lot of construction activity going on in our city facilities. I'm going to elaborate on that shortly. But one of the facilities includes the DPW Department. That new facility is under construction as we speak. And as many know, during the month of May, we typically have a hazardous household waste event. Unfortunately, we're not able to do it this May, in large part because of the construction activity. We are planning a hazardous household event for the upcoming year. We just don't have a final date set yet. However, I wanted everyone to know that the Macomb County Health Department also hosts a hazardous waste event on a monthly basis, and they have one coming up on Friday, March 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Again, that's March 13th, and that's at 43525 Elizabeth Road, which is right behind the Macomb County Jail. You can go to our website under our DPW Department, click on recycling, and you can get more information on this event. Again, that's March 13th. And then look forward to an update for our city household hazardous waste event later this year. Speaking of construction, there's a lot of ongoing construction now at our city campus facilities. For example, City Hall is being renovated. If you walk through the main corridor, you'll see some of the temporary walls up. The renovation is just beginning. It's going to take about a year to get it all completed. In addition, the police department is going through a major renovation, so if you have to go to the police department for one reason or another, the records department is still open. You can process any paperwork there. The front desk is still open, so you do have access to the police department, but that is going through a major renovation that'll take about a year to complete as well. And same with the library. That renovation work is about to commence. And the court building has also experienced the beginning of some major renovation work. In fact, the court operations now temporarily are being operated from the council chambers, and that will continue to be the case until March 16th, when they will move into the temporary quarters at the old Shelby 41A District Court. That will begin on March 16th, and they will be there for approximately four to five months until they can move back into their renovated quarters here on the city campus. So the district court is operational. You can call the court main number if you have any questions or have any business to conduct with the court. But for now, temporarily, for the next couple of weeks, they'll be operating out of the council chambers and then up in Shelby for the next four to five months. So we look forward to getting all this work done. It's desperately needed, but pardon our dust as we continue through the project. And I also wanted to mention that the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition will celebrate Black Balloon Day. In fact, there's a resolution on the consent agenda this evening, celebrating this day, and that's on Thursday, March 5th, at 5:30 p.m. at Christ Lutheran Church, and that's at 12500 Canal Road in Sterling Heights. And at this time, Lieutenant Mario Bastinelli from the Sterling Heights Police Department would like to share some more information about this very important event.
Mayor, city council, city manager, thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you. I do want to talk about the special event that we're holding on Thursday, like you said, the Christ Lutheran Church on Canal Road at 5:30. It's to celebrate and to recognize Black Balloon Day, which is a day to pay tribute and recognize people that have lost their lives to the opioid epidemic. And we also, there'll be families in attendance, and we'll give them the opportunity to speak and recognize and remember their family members that they've lost. Now, besides that, I want to take this opportunity to talk about the steps that we've taken just in the last year to further our fight against the opioid epidemic. And that being said, me being, part of what I do is I'm the president of the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition, which is a nonprofit fighting substance abuse issues in our community. I'm also the program supervisor for the Comeback Quick Response Team. Now, for anyone that may not know what that is, it's a collaboration between the Sterling Heights Police Department and Families Against Narcotics. And basically, what it is, is anytime that we have an overdose in our community, this team, what it is, the police officer, a peer recovery coach, and a nurse from FAN, we go out and we take the progressive, proactive steps into trying to help people into rehabilitation and to get them resources to get back on their feet. So we've been working with FAN very closely. We have a couple of people here in the audience that are part of that program. I'll recognize them in a second. But we've took some time planning. It's a pilot program for the state of Michigan. If it ends up being successful, it's going to go statewide. And we've been doing this program for the last month in Sterling Heights. And I wanted to let everyone know, I'm so incredibly proud of this team that we have, the officers that we have that are working with us, dedicated, compassionate, and it's a whole 'nother realm of being able to fight the opioid epidemic, other than in regards to the police department just arresting people. And it's been very successful. I'd like to share some numbers with you. So after one month of operation of this program, we visited 23 houses, we attempted to make contact. In the midst of that, we got 10 people into rehabilitation, 10 people in one month. And we provide them recovery programs and, like I said, into rehab. We've also provided, through FAN, six families were able to get coaches, family coaches assigned to the family to help dealing with families, with a family member that has addiction. So it gives them resources, teaches them how to cope and deal with people that are, you know, within that fight. Ultimately, that's a 72% success rate for one month, 72%. So we got 10 people into rehabilitation after one month, when Sterling Heights last year saw 72 overdoses for an entire year, and we already got 10 people in rehabilitation. It's outstanding. I think we were, you know, kind of not sure exactly how successful we were going to be, and I think we kind of knocked it out of the park, and I think we're going to continue to do that. As the program moves forward, we're fine-tuning the program, and we're, when this program got out there to the public, we've had a lot of people step up, citizens that have helped volunteer or have donated money. For example, one of the families that we helped out, there was a boyfriend and girlfriend, they had a child, their furnace ended up going out. We're trying to get them to rehabilitation. Their furnace went out. Deana Garcia, who's here from FAN, she assisted, reached out to her, wanted to pay for, and got their furnace fixed for free. So this family's trying to, we're not just getting them into rehabilitation, we're helping, you know, their family all the way around. We also have programs coming forward to be able to get people the next step after they get, you know, into recovery, getting them jobs, training opportunity. So this thing is blowing up, like you guys don't even know. It's really unreal. But in the midst of that, I would like to bring someone up here that truly understands the journey and the road to recovery, and she's one of our peer recovery coaches, and I'd like to introduce her. Her name's Frankie Walker. She's a part of our program. I'd like her to come up and just kind of tell you briefly about her story and how she's traveling and what she does with the quick response team.
Hi, I'm Frankie. I'm a woman in long-term recovery. So I am a peer recovery coach for Hope Not Handcuffs, Amphibious Against Narcotics. I was asked by Diana to be a part of this program. I've been in recovery from heroin and crack for over five years. I'm also a business owner in Macomb County. I own a recovery house for women, actually two. And my life is completely centered around recovery right now. But as far as the quick response team goes, it's actually been amazing. I was very excited about it, and I do want to, you know, take my hat off to the officers. I was very surprised to see actually how compassionate and empathetic they were, how You know, Deana and I were just talking, officers are like taking their lunch break and going and visiting families that maybe we weren't able to get in contact with that day, or really going the extra mile. But I've had the pleasure also of being able to work with a few of the individuals as a coach. And I'm actually coaching two of the women right now that we visited. They are, one, it was actually two couples. So Jason, the other part of the peer recovery coach team, he goes on Fridays, I go on Tuesdays. He's working with the male portion of the couples. I'm working with the female portion. One of the couples, we're living in a hotel. They've been living in a hotel for nine months. They had no idea how they were even going to, where they were going the next day. They had no means left. Neither one of them were employed, both on methadone, using Xanax, periodically smoking crack, no children. They both have children. Neither of them have custody of their children. And through the team visiting them one day and then us going back the following, they met them on a Friday, we went back the following Tuesday. Families Against Narcotics provided them with a two-week scholarship to get into recovery housing, so they're both living in recovery housing now. They're drug-free, aside from their medically assisted treatment. They're both actively looking for employment, and they are going to counseling. MACOSA, I don't know if you guys are familiar with them, that's Macomb, I'm sure you are, County Office of Substance Abuse, is providing them with 60 days' rent. So they're well on their way. And then the couple that Lieutenant was speaking about are both on medically assisted treatment now too, but they're on a SUBICade shot that they take once a month. They're both looking for employment. They both went to a Narcotics Anonymous meeting with me. The female did go to detox. The impact that this is having on people is unbelievable. Deana and I went out today with one of your officers, and, you know, there was a grandmother that we saw who's 71 years old, who has been raising children since she was 18, because she had her children, and then her children had children who they could not raise because of drug addiction. So there were four grandchildren that she started raising, and now she's raising two of those grandchildren's children. And she had no idea that there was any support for family. I think she's kind of been taking this on all by herself, so she's been parenting children for 53 years. And we're talking, she has little children in her home right now, and she has one addict living with her who's fresh out of prison, and the other one, we tried to visit, but we've had, you know, no success making contact with him. But, you know, these are, she doesn't understand how to deal with this and the boundaries and the things that go along with setting that. So the family coaching end of it has been amazing as well, because when the family starts getting better, the addict starts getting better, because they can't manipulate that family anymore, right? I don't know, as a person in recovery, had I had, you know, I said this at the press release, had I, I didn't know how to get out. I didn't even know how I got where I was. I was literally living on the streets in Detroit. I was homeless five years ago. I had no contact with my children. I don't even have any real family in Michigan, so I had really no idea how I was going to get out of where I was, or even, I used to wake up every day and cry and be like, how did I even get here? You know, it just happened so fast. When you're caught up in that deep of addiction, you don't even, you don't even see it coming, because you get so focused on just staying high. Had I had something like this at that time, like somebody could meet me where I was, kind of, which is what we're doing, we're meeting people where they are, and offered me a way out, I feel like I might have gotten better a little faster, especially as diligent as we are. Like, we keep going back to the same addresses. We don't leave them alone, you know? And I think a lot of times addicts have people give up on them, and they see we're not giving up on you. We see something in you. We know that there's a better way. And, you know, having a recovery coach who can sit in front of you and say, hey, listen, and I don't mean to be, I'm very forthcoming, so five years ago, I was homeless sticking a needle in my arm, and here I sit before you today as a business owner, a homeowner, a mother. And that was one of the things that the woman that we saw today said, that gives me hope. It lets, because she feels like her, the older grandchildren that she has, that she's raising, their children are going to die addicts. You know, so, I don't know, I'm very thankful to be a part of this. Every Tuesday, I'm like, we're outside in the car waiting for the officer to come back. Did he get somebody? Can we please, you know, just go in and talk to these people? And, I mean, we're making a difference across the board. And I, the officers, because I can tell you, five years ago, my perception of police officers was not a good one, you know, because they didn't, there was no one reaching out. All they wanted to do was put handcuffs on me. I've sat in Sterling Heights Police Department. I got arrested at the Walmart over there, you know? So to be on the other side of that and to see, you know, it was, people just didn't understand it, and to see people reaching out and wanting to understand this disease is really amazing, and I think that you guys are really going to be in awe over the next year over what happens in your community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mario, anything else?
No, I'll just add one thing at the end.
Okay. Lieutenant Bastinelli handed me this resolution that is appearing on the agenda today, but I think it'd be fitting to read from it right now. It's on our consent agenda, and before I do that, I do want to thank you, ma'am, for coming up and speaking. We've had the opportunity to hear from people who are in recovery, and it's really powerful and impactful to us, and hopefully, more importantly, to people who haven't made that step yet. And that's the audience you're really trying to reach. And I hope that they're out there watching this council meeting, or that somehow, through our social media, through what we do, through these resolutions, through the meetings, through the constant, you know, emails and whatnot, that that message gets to somebody, because you are making a big difference. So with that, we will be later tonight voting on a resolution designating Friday, March 6th, 2020, as Black Balloon Day in the city of Sterling Heights to increase awareness of addiction, the opioid epidemic, and recognizing loved ones' loss as a result of overdose and drug-related deaths. Black Balloon Day is an annual national event aimed at raising awareness of overdose and drug-related deaths throughout the United States. Drug addiction is an epidemic affecting families and communities throughout the state of Michigan, Macomb County, and the city of Sterling Heights. A new study released in January of 2019 found that, on average, 130 people die each day after accidentally overdosing on opioids. Over the past three decades, drug overdoses have killed approximately 870,000 people. In addition to the tragic loss of life, the effects of addiction has a heartbreaking and devastating effect on children, parents, and other loved ones. Black Balloon Day encourages discussion to educate communities on overdose prevention and to provide basic information on the range of support services and groups, including the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition that exists through the state of Michigan to assist all those afflicted and impacted by drug addiction. City council seeks to call attention to those families and friends who have been faced with the challenge of addiction and to commemorate the lives and legacies of loved ones' loss as a result of drug overdoses. City of Sterling Heights endeavors to do its part to foster constructive discussion on drug addiction and disseminate information about available resources to those impacted and to advocate for increased resources to address the epidemic. So later this meeting, we will be recognizing Friday, March 6th, 2020, as Black Balloon Day in the city of Sterling Heights. We will encourage residents to display a black balloon to call attention to the lives and legacies of the loved ones' loss as a result of drug overdoses. City of Sterling Heights endeavors to do its part to foster constructive discussion on drug addiction and disseminate information about available resources to those impacted and to advocate for increased resources to address the epidemic. So later this meeting, we will be recognizing Friday, March 6th, 2020, as Black Balloon Day in the city of Sterling Heights. We will encourage residents to display a black balloon to call attention to the lives and legacies of the loved ones' loss as a result of drug overdoses, increase awareness and attention to drug addiction and the opioid crisis. Mario.
Thank you, Mayor. Last thing, I just want to personally thank all of you, council, mayor, city manager, Mark Kazupski, and especially our chief, Chief Doolittle Kowski. We could not do this and be successful without the support of you. Being progressive and proactive is what makes Sterling Heights head and shoulders above any other city, and it's because of your support and your leadership. I truly appreciate it, as I know my officers do at the police department. So on that, I'd like to say thank you to all of you. Lastly, there is another event that I would like just to promote real quick. CARE Southeastern Michigan, they're doing a fundraiser also. It's on April 21st, and it's being held at the Heritage Center. All that information is on the CARE's website. Again, thank you all for all your time.
All right. Thank you very much, Mario. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Mayor, I wanted to conclude on another very positive note. Now that we're suffering through the final phase of the winter doldrums, we know that spring and summer is just around the corner, and the days are getting longer, and you know what we have to look forward to. So I wanted to invite everyone to sit back and enjoy this very brief video.
Sterling Fest, the city of Sterling Heights well-loved art and music fair, returns this year on July 23rd, 24th, and 25th, and we're thrilled to announce this year's incredible headlining acts performing on the AT&amp;T Main Stage.
On Thursday, July 23rd, the music of Queen is celebrated in Dodge Park as Simply Queen kicks off Sterling Fest. This international Queen tribute act has played thousands of shows, performing an amazing and authentic concert.
On Friday night, the Grammy Award-nominated and multi-platinum Chicago quintet, The Plain White Tees bring their unique blend of pop, punk, and melody-driven rock and roll to Sterling Fest. The group is known for its string of multi-platinum hit singles, including "One, Two, Three, Four," "Rhythm of Love," and number-one single, the Grammy-nominated "Hey There, Delilah."
(singing) So much left to say, if every simple song I wrote to you would take your breath away, I'd write it all. Even more love with me, you'd...
Check out The Plain White Tees on Friday, July 24th. And on Saturday night, July 25th, the original voice of Foreigner, Lou Gramm, The Jukebox Hero, with Asia featuring John Payne, brings their classic rock double bill to Sterling Heights.
Sterling Fest will conclude with an exciting night of rock and roll, featuring all of the Foreigner and Asia hits you know and love, including "I Wanna Know What Love Is," "Double Vision," "Cold as Ice," "Head Games," "Jukebox Hero," "Feels Like the First Time," "Waiting for a Girl Like You," and "Heat of the Moment." "Double Vision", "Cold as Ice", "Head Games", "Jukebox Hero", "Feels Like the First Time", "Waiting for a Girl Like You", and "Heat of the Moment".
Mark your calendars today for Sterling Fest, July 23rd, 24th, and 25th. Don't miss it!
We can hardly wait. And thank you, Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. One of the days we kind of like look forward to. Only, only day we look forward to more is when Sterling Fest gets here. But the announcement day of the main acts is really something we look forward to every year. And I think, you know, I did, I did, not gonna lie, I gave a sneak peek to a couple people that these were the acts, and they were really excited about it. So I am too, and I think this is gonna be a really, really great Sterling Fest. So thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. And again, thank you, Lieutenant Bastinelli, for the presentations tonight. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances to create a Sustainability Commission. We have a presentation from our Assistant City Attorney, Don Denault. Mr. Denault?
Very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First of all, I wanna thank you, I don't have any visuals for this presentation, first of all, but I do wanna thank you for finally holding Sterling Fest on my birthday. It's been too long, too long coming. So, I'm very happy that I can celebrate my birthday at Sterling Fest this year.
We'll sing to you this year, Don.
Fantastic, from the stage, that'd be fantastic. With that, again, I don't have any beautiful visuals for you tonight, but I do have a, an ordinance that I think is near and dear to a lot of people's hearts. And it's sort of progressive in a sense, but it's also sort of something that's been around in concept for a long time in different forms and ways throughout the communities of the country. But not something that we've ever really come right out and created here in Sterling Heights. So, at the suggestion that was brought to the council at strategic planning, we have developed with administration a new ordinance that would propose the creation of a Sustainability Commission. And, you know, the first question people listening or watching might wonder about is, what does that even mean? What is, what is a Sustainability Commission? It sounds very legal and fancy. Well, sustainability has different definitions throughout the country. There are so many different commissions, just like this one, with different titles and names. Many of them are called Sustainability Commissions, many of them have a different name given to them, but similar in its purposes and goals. A simple definition of sustainability, as issued in 1987 by the World Commission on Environment and Development, is that it means meeting the needs of the present generation without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. That's a very simple goal, a simple definition for sustainability. As part of strategic planning and as part of this ordinance, we're also proposing a much more in-depth definition. Sustainability means balancing environmental, economic, and social demands to adopt strategies and activities for the use of resources that meet the needs of the city and its stakeholders today, while protecting, sustaining, and enhancing the human and natural resources that will be needed in the future. A sustainable community seeks to enhance the socio-environmental-economic well-being of the community while taking precautions not to compromise the quality of life of future generations. Toward that end, it reduces its use of non-renewable natural resources and its production of wastes, while at the same time improving livability. So if you take those concepts and you put a commission together to help the community and the city move forward toward meeting those, those aspirational goals, what does that look like? Well, the ordinance proposes a five-voting-member commission. And throughout the country, we've found models that have three members, five members, seven, nine, 11. Even Baltimore has 21 members. But a five-voting-member commission is proposed at this point, consisting of a minimum of four residents, leaving the opening there, if there's somebody that the city council really thinks that doesn't live in the city, but maybe has a vested interest in the community or an expertise, to be the fifth member. As well as allowing for the ability of city council to, at any time, appoint as many non-voting ex officio members as council might deem appropriate or as the commission might request of council, to help with expertise, to help with guidance, to help with bringing the interests of things like state, local, and federal governments, school districts, colleges, universities, youth, nonprofits, businesses, anybody else in the community or out, out there that might have an interest in helping Sterling Heights with meeting its sustainability mission and goals. The ordinance proposes that each member would hold the seat for three years. For the voting members, it would be staggered terms, two, two, and one, at the beginning, beginning on July 1st. And the commission would have about 19 different charges or directives or responsibilities, we'll call them in the ordinance. Just to highlight a couple of those that I think summarize the overall 19, it would advise and make recommendations to the city council and city manager on the city's long-range goals, policies, and programs on all matters pertaining to sustainability. It would develop and advise the city council on implementation of community-wide strategies regarding waste reduction, recycling, and sustainable growth and development. It would create a model of sustainability through efforts to advocate, educate, and promote the social, economic, and environmental health of the community now and into the future. It would recognize natural resources as chief assets of the city and encourage responsible stewardship of those assets. It would research initiatives outside of the city to determine how other communities are addressing sustainability. And with all of that, it would create a sustainability plan by the end of its first year of existence and continue to update city council and maintain a three-year sustainability plan that outlines specific areas for city council to study and the commission's recommendations relating to those areas. And outside of creating that plan, it's also, it's also, its mission would also be to advise city council on any other issues and best practices that are related to sustainability as the commission deems appropriate. The ordinance proposes that they would meet at least six times a year, but certainly they'd have the discretion to meet more than that. It proposes that the city planner or designee be a city liaison to assist them with all of the needs that they may have as they meet. It would be a solely advisory and recommending body, so it would not have any specific authority to make decisions that bind the city of Sterling Heights. It would keep thorough minutes so that everybody could see the discussions that it kept and had, and the topics that they addressed and how they addressed them. And with that, I think that pretty much summarizes the highlights. There are certainly more mundane terms in there in terms of operations. But I'm certainly here to answer any questions that the council may have about it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Denault. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Mr. Inks?
Mr. Mayor, thank you and good evening to you, the council and city administration. I just wanted to briefly express my support for this ordinance. I think it's great that the city is taking a proactive approach to sustainability and environmental issues. For many decades, a lot of municipalities have taken kind of a silo approach to a lot of environmental and energy issues. Stormwater is its own issue, trees and landscaping are another issue. If it's one of the municipalities in the state who even addresses wetlands, it's doing that on its own. And that kind of doesn't really show appreciation for the interconnectedness of a lot of the environmental and energy issues that have affected municipalities in the metro-Detroit area. I think a good illustration of that is the recent flooding events that have happened after significant rainfall throughout the metro-Detroit area. You know, it's not just about looking at how cities are handling stormwater. It's also how they're dealing with impervious pavement, how they're dealing with trees and vegetation, how they're dealing with, there was a fourth one, I forgot what it was. But, but there's an interconnectedness between all these different environmental issues. So I, I think that the city has a really great opportunity here to come up with a plan that could be a model for the region. There are a few other municipalities in the metro-Detroit area who have some type of either Sustainability Commission or a Sustainability Office or an Environmental Advisory Commission. But the vast majority of them don't, and especially here in Macomb County. So I think that this is a really great opportunity for the city, not only to create a good plan for the city, but to also act as a model for the rest of the region. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on this item? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Sarowski?
Resolve to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances to create a Sustainability Commission.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion, Ms. Sarowski?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Taylor. I do want to just voice my true and utter support of this because we have, it is hard as a city, when we don't own all the property, to, to direct how things go. But this will give us an opportunity to have a little bit more support. And some, and this commission itself will be able to provide us information that we need when we're making decisions and some background. So we're hoping that all the residents out there, civil engineers, environmentalists, just who have an interest, chemists, biologists, all of you that are out there, especially who, you know, needing to be a Sterling Heights city resident, please vote, or please come and apply for this, because these are the people that we need on this type of commission in order to make the best decisions. They've got the expertise, and, and having them at our fingertips will really assist us in making the best decisions. So I'm very much in support of this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sarowski. Anyone else, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Deanes?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Denault. Well, actually, I think, I guess I have one for the clerk, too. Since the clerk is providing, preparing the form, the application, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, has the, has the application been prepared yet?
Mr. Riska?
I'm sorry, through the chair, I apologize.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Ms. Riska.
It has not been yet.
Okay. Is, is there going to be anything specific on the application in regards to Sustainability Commission? Are we vetting people for a specific interest or a specific area of sustainability? Either the clerk or Mr. Denault can answer that, if, if there's one.
Whoever wants it, Ms. Riska?
I'd probably defer, I would defer to Mr. Denault.
Mr. Denault?
So, we would take from the ordinance for the application to express that city council is looking for a diverse group of members from a range of backgrounds and interests. At least three members shall have expertise and/or demonstrated interest in sustainability and issues related thereto, including but not limited to suburban sustainability, responsible environmental policies and practices, water quality, water use efficiency, water conservation, air quality, energy conservation, and/or clean energy alternatives, materials management, local and regional ecology, mobility, land use stewardship, green site planning and building, waste management, human health, and community and regional economics and finance. A lot of categories. We wanted to keep it very broad, but also very pertinent to the topics.
So are these gonna be checkboxes, or are they gonna write an essay?
Well, we don't know yet what it'll look like, but we'll keep it simple.
Okay, and then, a question, this maybe, this might be a newbie question, but on this or any other committee, either official members or ex officio members, can someone serve on the committee that either is under contract by the city or could bid work with the city?
That's a good question. I would think that any, any member of this commission could not have a business contract with the city pursuant to charter and pursuant to certainly our ethics rules and guidelines that we have in place, and ethics ordinance. That being said, I would think that they have, if they have a business in the community, they could certainly be a member of this commission.
So someone from GFL or Waste Management could not sit on this commission, but could possibly be used as an advisor?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Denault, council, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Arco?
Through the chair to Mr. Denault, I have a couple of questions, too. First of all, have we decided who the liaison from the city will be for this commission?
Yes, it's the city planner or designee of the planning office.
Okay. And, I must have missed that, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
And, the other thing is, you don't have to have the answer today. But in some of the descriptions that you gave us for this particular commission, I think cross over into what we're already doing with solid waste management. So is there a way that you can tell us the two lanes so that they're not crossing over into each other's commission at the next meeting? It doesn't, you know, okay, because you can re, we don't have the descriptions right now of the solid waste management commission in front of us in order to see what their responsibility are as well? And then lastly, I just have a comment, and I have to say, Mr. Dalton, you make the ordinance introductions pleasant and entertaining, to say the least, because we all know that if it wasn't for the executive summary sometimes, it's, the ordinance itself is pretty deep. So I wanna thank you for that.
Oh, thank you.
Also, anyone else? I don't have a lot to, to add. We talked about this at the strategic planning session. And I just wanna say I commend city attorney, Don Denault, for the work that he put into this. It's very comprehensive, and I think it's a huge step forward for the city of Sterling Heights. And it's something that I think could have a legacy for a very, very long time here. So I'm very impressed by it and looking forward to getting this going, and I'll be voting in favor of it. So, without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. Vanderpool. My name is Brandy Wright, I live on Stratford Drive at 19 and Shaner. I had a whole spiel on the Black Balloon Day, the lieutenant sort of stole my thunder there. I do wanna say, though, I appreciate all the city does and the police department does to bring awareness to this issue, especially with the Hope Not Handcuffs program, as well as the new Comeback program. I've counseled a number of people who have had a variety of addictions. And I think the one takeaway I've always had is that they're us. They're our neighbors, our siblings, our kids. And, in my case, when I was a child, it was my mother. And, you know, I think it's, a lot of times people say, well, they're weak-willed, or why don't you just stop doing drugs? I think it's very important for us to remember that it's a disease and it's something that, you know, you can't just stop. You wouldn't tell a person with cancer to just shrink their tumor on their own, you would get them help. And so I'm very appreciative of all that you're doing for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Koski?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir?
Tom Ranger, 5000 West Judoka Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and Sterling Heights citizens. I'm here tonight to give the citizens of Sterling Heights a heads-up on a tax increase just one week from now. On Tuesday, March 10th, there's an election vote concerning a two-plus mil tax increase for all taxpayers of Macomb County. The first millage is for an additional 1.9 mils sponsored by the bureaucrats of the Macomb Intermediate School District. I ask, when is enough is enough? I'm already paying almost 14 mils in property taxes for state education. And an additional request for 1.9 mils is absolutely ridiculous. For example, if the taxable value of your home in Sterling Heights is $100,000, your taxes will go up this year an additional $190. The second tax millage is a .2 mil tax renewal for the Detroit Institute of Arts. What the DIA bureaucrats fail to tell you in all those TV ads and propaganda pamphlets you've all been receiving in the mail is, for starters, they lied. This millage was never supposed to be renewed in the first place, and that they're deviously requesting this millage two years before it even expires in a traditionally low-turnout election. The art bureaucrats also conveniently fail to mention that their art director, Mr. Salvador Salort Pons, is getting a $100,000 a year raise this year, bringing his salary to $475,000. All taxpayer-paid, an outrageous amount of money for any bureaucrat. It's no wonder they want a millage. I'm recently retired and living on a modest fixed income. And these two millages will cost me an additional $200 a year. And when my expenses go up, it has to come from my personal savings, which is a finite amount. I'm sick and tired of these bureaucrats treating me and other taxpayers like a bottomless money grab bag. I urge the citizens of Sterling Heights to go out and vote Tuesday, March 10th, and stand together and say no to any new taxes. And vote no on both of these money grabs. And be forewarned, a new one-mil Macomb County jail prison tax increase is in the works for an early August election date. This means a potential three-mil property tax increase in less than six months. Hang on to your wallets.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ranger. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Yes, ma'am?
I would just like, Mayor Taylor, council, thank you. My name is Nancy Hoffman, I live in Sterling Heights. I would like to ask, on this- in Sterling Heights. I would like to ask, on this millage for the DIA, are they actually raising the mil on the, on the millage itself? Is that changing? Because if it's not changing, then what you're actually paying now isn't going to change, because it goes by your ballot unless the value of your home went up. You're not going to be getting additional taxes. You're just going to be extending the current one. So, and the benefit that the DIA has, I think, is worthy of this, of this millage. I think it's educational for the kids. I think it's educational for older adults, regular adults, anybody, because when do you get the chance to go somewhere to the degree that the DIA is and get to see some of the things? This year, through the senior center, we got to go there and got to see the baseball exhibit. That was free. And I personally, I will support it, and I hope the residents of Sterling Heights also will support it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Hoffman. And by the way, our facilities manager is going to be looking into the, the door out there. So that'll be addressed in the morning.
Aye.
You're welcome. Anyone else under communications from citizens? Ms. Early?
Major, City Council members, and audience, and Jasmine Early from Sterling Heights. First, I wanted to express my condolences to, for the death of Lieutenant Lorne Farrell, and prayers for his family and friends. Second, I had to mention, election is, the City Hall Office is going to be open on Saturday, March 7th, for people to come and cast their absentee ballot and voter registration, so they can come on Saturday to vote from 9:00 to 8:00 p.m. at City Hall. Also, on March 10th, I'm inviting the residents, come out and vote. The Republicans need to come out, even though it is not said that there is a Republican need to, but it is. We need to vote, and you can tell who I support. Also, come and vote, because the proposals will be on the ballot. And speaking about the proposals, it was promised in 2012 that the DIA tax will be one-time tax to create an endowment. Also, we had received, as the gentleman before me, so many flyers, advertisement in the newspaper and the news, from the DIA supporting this proposal. Who is paying for that? I love art, but I do not support deceiving the residents, saying that the current, these current tax doesn't expire until December 31st, 2023, and they are asking now to renew that. That is wrong. They don't need to do it. They get 36% of pay raises to the DIA executive. A lawsuit from a business in Macomb County is in litigation in this moment against the DIA, subject to open records and meeting laws. I can support that, and I invite the residents, please say no. Art is no a need. If I wanted to go there, I will pay the same amount, or maybe less, go one or twice, which I only have been twice in the last 10 years. We, for the residents who do not know, we just got a new tax to support the Martha T. Berry Care Facility. It will not be on the ballot. It's one-year .1 mil tax. The county, the county board voted to levy it under a state law. So we are having another tax in this moment. I invite the residents to vote no for the DIA, and for the others one is also, and come out and vote for the president, for Trump, as you can see, on March. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Early. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion. Go on to reports from city administration. Anything tonight, Mr. Vanderpool? Nothing further, Mayor. Mr. Koshubsky?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Counsel, any reports? New business?
Mrs. Zarco.
Okay. Yes, I just have a couple of comments. I'm, we all know that we opened up the community center this past Saturday. It was a huge success, and we can say that it's the proverbial built it, build it and they will come, and that's certainly what happened on Saturday. It was, yesterday, I was excited because as I'm sitting and watching the news, one of my friends is texting me saying, you won't believe this, but I'm out walking the track at this, at the center. So, so to me, I think it was a great investment. I need to thank all the residents for making it possible, but certainly all of our staff and everybody that was involved in, in making it a dream come true. So that's all I have to say on the center. And then still, we're talking about the census. Remember, we all want to be counted, so we're going to start wrapping, or winding things up now as we do door hangers on, on the doors to encourage people to make sure that they fill out the census form, either online or in the mail. If you're fearful of doing it online at home, we'll have places where you could do it in the city, whether it be at the library, at the community center, and at the Keldean Foundation. So we're trying to make this as convenient as we can for everybody. It's only like seven or nine questions, I believe, and there is nothing on the census questionnaire that has anything to do with citizenship. We, and it's, you don't have to declare income. It's only to count the people that are living in that house. And we want everybody to be counted because it amounts to like $1,800 a year for each person. And if you don't count, you're, that's like a loss. So we want to make sure that that money comes back into our community because we are eligible, and we don't always want to be the donor. We would like to be the recipient sometimes of tax dollars. And one more question, and, and we, we talk about this all the time, and there's times that I've had the opportunity to speak at, it would be Eagle Scout ceremonies, and one of the topics that I always like to bring up is citizenship, and I usually run down a list of 10 characteristics of a good citizen. And one of the characteristics is pay your taxes, preferably without complaining. This is all part of us living in this country or in this city, that we do our part to benefit collectively. We can't each go out and hire a police officer or a firefighter to protect us. We can't each go out and fight, and, and buy a park so that we can entertain ourselves, or certainly build a rec center, as we just found out. But, or an art institute, or a school, but when we do it together collectively, we all benefit. And that's what taxes are all about. Nothing further.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Just briefly, a touch on Saturday and the opening of the community center. It wa, it was a great day for everybody that was there, and, and all the residents of the city. I myself am taking a class, so I was there last night, first night of classes, and I have to tell you, the buzz in that building was just amazing. The participants in all the classes were astounded by what, what we have now compared to what we had before, and it was fun to see parents walking on the track that were waiting for their kids that were in dance class, and people studying at some of the, the charging stations, and there were just people everywhere enjoying that building, and a basketball game going on in the green gym, and it, it's, it just brought to light everything that we hoped it would. And I'm looking forward to taking a second class as well. So I encourage everyone, there is something for everyone in that building. I know some people think that there isn't, but we have so many children's programs from tots on up to teens and to high school kids as far as dance and, and baton and, and other programs, basketball. So there truly is something for everyone. The, most of the fitness classes can be altered for different ages or different capabilities. So, young and old, you know, when I, when I went to register, the registration said 18 to 99 was the age, age limit for the classes that I'm taking. And, you know, it's just, I can't say enough about it. It wa, it was really fun to be in that building, and kudos to Kyle and that whole Parks and Recs Department. Kyle and Mark DeSanto were there last night, the first night. They wanted to make sure things went without a hitch. Of course, there's always going to be some hiccups and some learning curves, and, and they're right there in the forefront, taking it all on, and, and I really appreciate all the hard work that that whole department, along with all the other departments in our, in our city that had anything to do with that building. We have engineering and building and DPW, and, and almost every department had something to do with getting that community center together. So I'm really excited to see where we're going to go. I'm excited to see how the cultural exchange is going to be on Friday night, which is one of my personal favorite nights. And with that, I also would like to bring up the, I'm upset that Lieutenant Bastinelli left, actually.
Wow.
I'm wondering, Mr. Vanderpool, we have our halo, and is there a color for addiction that we could light the halo on March the 6th? Maybe you can ask Lieutenant Bastinelli if that's, you know, if they have a color. You know, black, the black balloon is, that's not going to do us much good, but if there's an alternate color, I'd like to see the halo illuminated on the 6th. I have nothing further. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to remind everybody that March is Reading Month. I had the pleasure today of going over to our new community center and reading to, two books to some preschoolers today, and I'm also scheduled at several other places. So if you get a chance, please read to children, grandchildren, children that aren't related to you, but please, please participate in March's Reading Month. A, a couple of things. One, I was driving down 17 Mile Road today, and I noticed the fence line along 17 Mile Road, west of Van Dyke, along the, the Chrysler Fence Line there is just trash. It's horrible. There's just a ton of trash there. It happens every winter. Trash accumulates, the snow melts, but I, I don't know what we should do about it, but it makes our city look terrible. And I'm, I'm not sure how we deal with that, but we need to deal with that and get that cleaned up, and look at all our, our right of ways and our, our fence lines, and, and try to clean that up. I, I'm looking for suggestions from the city to, on how we do that, so I'd appreciate the, some response from city administration on that. The reason why I was driving down 17 Mile Road is I had gotten a notice from a citizen who had gotten a, a letter from code enforcement about his address not being available. And this has been a bugaboo of mine since I was on the, the fire department. You know, you go on a 911 call, it's an emergency, it's, it's nighttime, it's raining, whatever, and you're trying to find the address, you know, so you can respond to this emergency in an appropriate amount of time, and, and there's no address to be found, and there were several times where we went to the wrong house. It was the house next door, you know, that kind of thing, all because people don't have their address on their house. It's not visible. This gentleman was, was cited by our code enforcement officer. He went out right away and corrected the problem. But this, this led us to another discussion, and that is, he was notified by regular mail, and they gave him seven days to correct the problem, and by the time the letter got to him, it was only four days. And he was fortunate that he was home and not on vacation or so forth. So, I, you know, if UPS can do it, and if FedEx can do it, and if everybody else can do it by leaving some sort of notification, a sticker on your door or whatever, if there's some way we can do an immediate notification to anybody who has a, a code enforcement issue, I think we should take a look at that. We want to make sure that we're helping people, not hurting people by, by finding them. And if there's a way that we can do something better, more efficiently, I, I think we should do it. And then, just to go back, please, take a look at your house, and if your addresses are not visible from the street level, take a look at how you have your address posted in your, on, on your house. And then, I also want to thank Parks and Recs, everybody in the city. I especially want to thank the taxpayers for their generosity. That new community center is awesome. It just really is. And it was exciting. I had my two-year-old grandson in there with me today as part of the March's Reading Month, and he was just amazed. I mean, it was just like, you know, going from place to place, and, and so many seniors coming out and watching people play pickleball, and it really, it really does bring the community together, and I, it's just a fantastic addition to our community. And then, last but not least, I want to say a special thank you to the taxpayers of the city of Sterling Heights. I guess everybody knows here, I'm a former city employee. I get a city pension. Quite often, people would say to me when they found I was a firefighter here, you know, thank you for your service, and I would always jokingly respond, well, thank you for paying your taxes, you know, because that's where I got my paycheck. And I never forgot, from day one, I never forgot where my paycheck came from. 10 days ago, we had a medical emergency in my house, had to rush to the hospital. There was an emergency surgery and a, a brief stay and recovery, and I'm, I'm sitting in there, and, you know, I'm sitting in the hospital, I'm thinking, you know, how much is this going to cost me? And then I realized how lucky I am that even if it costs me something, I have health insurance, it's going to pick up the majority of that cost. And the reason why I have that health insurance is because of the taxpayers of Sterling Heights, and I, I, I am genuinely grateful to the taxpayers for everything they do for these city employees. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yanis. Anyone else? Ms. Sarowski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I want to reiterate and make sure that people do remember the Black Balloon Day is March 6th, and even if you are not able to attend this event, say a prayer, send good wishes, whatever your faith base, or even just send out into the cosmos, good thoughts for these families. This is a very, very, very tragic thing that has happened to them. As one of our speakers said, it's everybody. It's your family. It's your neighbors. It's your boss's nephew, or whomever could be affected by this type of opiate addiction. As a nurse, I remember going into nursing school, and they always said, oh, no, don't worry about the opiates. We could, the people will only take what they need to take. They will not get addicted. That was a mantra. Pain was a, a vital sign that we had to control and eliminate, to make sure that pain was at zero. And that mentality got us a very large part to where we are today. So I, it is something that has happened over time. There's not a very strong root cause, but there's a good idea that we need to continue with the treatment that we're doing. We're, as one of our, Frankie, the lady who spoke, said, it's amazing what, how compassionate our officers are. They've always been compassionate. They just didn't have the tools to, to their trade. They were told that they needed to rest and to take down and to make sure that this is, this issue is eradicated as opposed to finding ways to prevent it or to treat it. That's just part of what we're doing here in Sterling Heights, and I'm very, very, very proud of the Drug Free Coalition, to be a member of it, and to make, and to see how well and how strongly we are making an impact in that first month, 10 people. Those people could have been dead. That's, that's 10 less, and that's always a ripple effect, especially with that fam, the families that are involved. So this is one thing that's been wonderful, and I am so proud of that for our city. Again, also, it has been mentioned, but Fri, excuse me, Tuesday, the 10th, is our primary, our, for the state of Michigan. So please, everybody get out and vote. Doesn't matter your party. Every party has issues. Every person has something that they can vote on. Please just vote. Your vote is so very, very important. And then what, Representative, or excuse me, Counselperson Yanis, former representative, mentioned something about 17 Mile, and it was brought to my attention, because I drive 17 Mile every single day coming home. 17 Mile, Station 1, is the station where Lieutenant Farrell was stationed, and their flag was at half mast. When I pulled up to the city, I noticed our flag was yet to be at half mast. So I'm going to ask possible city administration on Monday for Mr. Farrell's funeral, if we could please lower our flags. I don't know if that was already in the plan or not, but I'm just going to ask if that's a possibility, because he was definitely a city ser, member that served so hard, so dedicatedly to our city. He was a firefighter that, whose leg was broken last year with a, an accident with the hose, and was off work for a while, and now came back, and now he's no longer with us. And, young guy, so it could be anybody, and we just, he was one of ours, though. So I think that that would be a good tribute to him. And with that, I thank everybody, and have a great week.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Sarowski. I do want to just echo some of the comments by my colleagues regarding the community center. It was really a joy to be there on Saturday. There were thousands of people that came through it and a lot of excitement. So, you know, this is going to be one of the things that people remember about Sterling Heights for a very long time, and I'm really excited about the future of the city, and, and particularly with regard to that new facility. with regard to that new facility. Just briefly about the census. So I got an email today. I want to ask our clerk, I got an email today from an elderly woman who said, I don't know if, I forwarded it to Mr. Vanderpoel, I don't know if it made its way to you yet, Ms. Riska, but she said, "I saw your letter, Mayor. I saw your letter about the census coming up, and I want to let you know, I already filled out my census form. I got it sent in the mail to me, and so I filled it out and sent it back already." Ms. Riska, have census forms gone out yet to anybody?
So the official 2020 census forms have not yet gone out. What she may have received was the American Community Survey, which gets sent out at random all throughout the year, all year.
Okay. So we'll check into that, because what I was concerned is, could people be using the census as like a phishing tool to go try to get information from people unwittingly sending that out? So I guess what I'd like you to tell the residents, when they get their official census form, it's going to be a postcard, right? Why don't you walk them through, what exactly are they going to be getting from the Census Bureau?
So I recently learned that the census letters will be going out March 13th. They will, it will not be in a postcard form, which we need to correct some literature that we have. It will actually be in a letter in an envelope, and that letter will have a census ID number and a website where people can visit the website, enter that census ID number. The head of the household will have 10 questions to complete. Each additional person in the household will have nine questions to complete. Then for the nonrespondents from that first letter, a week later, a couple weeks later, three weeks later, they'll get a number of postcards reminding them to complete the census. And if they are still nonrespondents by the end of March, or I'm sorry, the end of April, then they will get a paper form, which means they'll get all those questions in a paper form sent to them. And if they are still nonrespondents, the Census Bureau will send enumerators out to their households to neck-end doors.
Okay. And if they, if folks need help filling it out, we've been saying that they can get help, and there are resources, there'll be a number that they can call. There's 12 different languages. They can fill it out online, via the telephone. If they want to come to the city at the library, or the Senior Center, or at the Caldian Community Foundation, they can come and get assistance. Do they need to make an appointment? Do they call up and talk to somebody? Is it going to be open whenever those buildings are open? Can you give some more information about that?
So we will have designated computers at the library, the community center, the Senior Center, and at the Caldian Community Foundation. I'm not, I can't speak to the Caldian Community Foundation if they would like appointments to be made, but I can say that in our facilities, an appointment is not necessary. The computers will be available, you know, first-come, first-served type situation, and we'll have somebody help them navigate to the website. Of course, the respondents are going to have to complete the questions themselves, but we will have those resources, as well as the Census Bureau does have a phone number where there's multiple languages, and then they also have a lot of reference material that's translated, I think, into 59 or 56 different languages.
Okay, very good. I did, I actually did a taping for a podcast, Keeping Up with the Caledians Today, and I was with Stacy Bari of the Caldian Community Foundation, and she said the same thing. Just come in. They don't take appointments, so if you need help, just go to the Caldian Community Foundation.
Yeah. If I could just say one more thing, we have a number of census completion events that are scheduled for the Senior Center and Library, so I encourage the residents to keep an eye out for those events, and they can come to those events as well.
Right, exactly. Okay. There is an event Thursday night at the Caldian Community Foundation, is that right, at 6:00 p.m.? Is that open to anybody? Is it open to, who are we hoping to attract to that event, Ms. Riska?
So that is an event that is hosted by the Caldian Community Foundation. I would assume that they, you know, you would allow anybody to come, so, but I would definitely reach out to the Caldian Community Foundation if anyone's interested.
Okay, thank you very much. Another topic for you, Ms. Riska, voting, which was brought up by a number of residents today on Tuesday, March 10th in Michigan. We have no reason absentee of voting for the first time in maybe ever, and so I know a lot of people probably have already submitted absentee ballots, and they may have voted for a candidate who's no longer actively running for president. Can you explain what the process is? If somebody wants to spoil that ballot, come in and cast a new vote.
Sure. Anybody can come in and spoil their ballot if they've already submitted it. They come into our office, and they have to sign something saying that they are asking that that ballot be spoiled, and then we just issue them a new ballot. We are open, you know, 8:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and we're also open on Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the purposes of issuing and receiving AV ballots. So, yeah, anybody can come in. It's just simply signing a form saying that they want to spoil that ballot.
Okay, thank you very much. We encourage everybody to get out and vote. Some very, very important issues on the ballot, not just the presidential election, but a couple of important millage votes as well. I'd encourage everybody to come out to the Cultural Exchange this Friday at the new community center. Great event, and one of our favorites every year, and so we're looking forward to it in its new home with a lot of extra space, so we hope to see a lot of new faces there this year. So I think that's it. I don't have anything else, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. No discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming out.